Briefings and presentations, our first one will be the city calendar. Y'all have discussed the agenda items, work session briefing, item number one. And then course number two is the briefing themselves and the city secretary.
I'll start with your consent agenda. All right, on our consent agenda, we have item four A, consider approving approval of draft city council meeting minutes for the special city council meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the regular city council meeting of December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Item four B, consider resolution approving the terms and conditions for professional engineering service agreement twenty-three dash zero 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 eight for phase two engineering design and construction administration services for the Cherry Street and Center Street alley for Forest Lane to Alexander Avenue, alley reconstruction project with IEA EAK in the proposed amount of ninety-five thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. The alley proposed for reconstruction was built in the nineteen seventies and after aging for forty years is in poor condition and needs rehabilitation. Drainage improvements will be designed in conjunction with the proposed alley improvements. IEA EAK will examine existing alley pavement and drainage infrastructure and prepare full design and specification. The design should be completed nine months and will comply with the city's construction standards and all regional, state, and federal requirements. Item four E, this is consider an ordinance providing for the appointment and contract for presiding municipal court judge and associate municipal municipal court judges for the municipal court of Duncanville and authorizing the mayor to sign said contract. Based on your current contract, the judge's terms will end on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Judge John Rizzo, Kathleen Austin, and Anthony Eland are asking for to be reappointed for the term starting in February twenty twenty-three and ending in January twenty twenty-five. All the judges meet the qualifications listed in the Texas Government Code Title Two, Sub- subtitle A, Chapter Thirty, Subchapter A, Section Three Zero Thirty dot zero 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 six. Judge Rizzo was appointed in two thousand seventeen, Judge Austin was appointed in two thousand twelve, and Judge Eland was appointed in two thousand nineteen. Based on the contract, you have ninety days to decide how you want to go about this. We have it on your consent for your consideration, or if you prefer to do it in a different fashion, our attorney may speak more on what the process for the contract is.
Yes, after February first, the old term expires, they have to be appointed for a two-year term. State law says if they're not, if you do not undertake to reappoint them within ninety days after the end of the term, they're automatically reappointed for an additional two years. So we just brought this, put it on your agenda if you want to go ahead. All three judges, from my observation, have been very attentive and I've not heard any complaints against them. If you want to re-interview them, we could put it on the next agenda and you could re-interview them if you'd like. Or if there's other candidates that you might consider using.
Close the consent agenda files.
Okay, briefings and presentations, the city secretary, item A, twenty twenty-three city council calendar.
Oh, thank you, members of the city council, city manager, staff. I wish I could take credit for the lovely work that has been done to detail the attention to you, what areas in color and presentation. But that is the work of management fellow Karen Smith. And so she is happy to receive any additional information that you have so that we can complete your calendar. And the reason for that is, even with personal kinds of considerations, is we're blocking off times and trying to figure out, like, for instance, when the city manager might schedule an additional retreat for you. And the only way we can tell is to measure the availability of the council. Thank you very much.
I have a question for the attorney as it relates to the council case calendar.
Yes, sir.
So if I wanted an executive session, how do I go about doing that?
You'd have to request the executive session, like you would any other agenda item, to the manager's office and to the city secretary. I think it requires, under your rules, that you and one other member can request a council agenda item. It's the Thursday, ten days before the council meeting, basically, is that Thursday before council or agenda week. So it would be just like any other agenda item.
So I would have to do it in writing?
Yes, with one other, in conjunction with one other council.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Anything else on that? All right, two, he is in Bravo, Cedar Ridge Road Corridor Study Results and Recommendations. Be, who's doing that one? Kurton Plummer? Welcome.
It's a pleasure to address this body. My name's Quentin Plummer, I represent Dunaway, I'm here with my colleague Kurton Campbell, and we'll go over the Cedar Ridge Drive Corridor Study. We did come here early, November twenty-second, for the first council session, and went through a lot of data at that time. So hopefully we get, you guys are able to get this data, digest and process it for tonight. Just as a refresher, now these are the limits of the corridor study here in blue. So we went from the north intersection of I twenty all the way down to the south of Santa Fe Trail. In discussions with city, with Ms. Jackie Colton and others, we narrowed our scope to sections two through four, which is basically in red. West Camp Wisdom Road all the way down to Big Stone Gap Road. We further subdivided these for tonight into section two A, two B, three A, three B, and four. That is mostly due to budgetary restraints, constraints for pavement based on the twenty-eighteen bond program and what was allocated for reconstruction on Cedar Ridge Drive. Our objective tonight is just to provide guidance to the city for selecting which segment should be fully reconstructed for pavement and utilities within the budgetary constraints. The selection criteria we used was safety in traffic, which one had the highest impact to motors, pavement condition, improving the worst segment for pavement condition, and the cost, which one has the most value to the city at the lowest cost. And then ultimately, what this body wants to pursue. Our initial recommendation back in that early council meeting work session was to reconstruct sections three and four with alternative C. This was the alternative, that was the road diet option, which reduced the lanes down to four and had twelve-foot wide shared use paths on both parkways. The feedback we got from this council was, let's not pursue that option, let's go back and replace as-is with the existing six-lane section, three lanes each direction. So that is, and with no bike lanes or shared use paths, there would be five-foot sidewalks in both parkways. So for a recommendation and conclusion during this analysis was, let's do the existing six-lane section as this council wants it to do. And we recommend, our recommendation to construct first would be Camp Wisdom to Middale slash Kathy Self-Morgan Way. That is the section adjacent to Duncanville High School. We chose this for three reasons, has the most impact to vehicular traffic. It has, it is the most traffic portion of the corridor for sections two through four. It has potential for safety improvements, this was the section that had the highest accident total, mostly at the intersections of Camp Wisdom and Middale, and also resulted in the most injuries with people, basically for paramedics needing to take them to the hospital. Additionally, because there's more traffic on this segment, this payment will likely deteriorate the fastest. Second reason, cost, this was actually the second lowest estimated overall cost, construction cost, mainly because it's about a hundred and sixty-five foot longer than the section that is the lowest cost, which was West Center Street to Wheatland Road. It's also tied as the worst pavement condition along the corridor. So our, if this is the option that is pursued, we would recommend constructing, reconstructing the corridor north to south, which is generally how traffic flows, a lot of traffic, traffic is generated from I twenty and then it slowly gets dispersed as people reach their destinations along the corridor. So again, this is the existing six-lane section and what is present throughout the entirety of Cedar Ridge Drive. Again, three lanes each side, center median about fourteen foot, can be used for beautification, trees, and then there will also be left turn lanes in that median and at intersections. And then again, two five-foot sidewalk sidewalks in each parkway. So for traffic, we had our intersection level of service analysis. What we show here is, on this left-hand portion, is the existing as it stands today. An acceptable level of service in our field is well, service of D or better, defined by text dots for an urban roadway. As you can see, all these meet that acceptable level of service, and those are delineated down in the bottom left-hand corner of that table. Important to note, we did not perform a twenty-year horizon forecast on this as, due to the as-built conditions in the vicinity of the corridor. Most of the land is used already with single-family schools, land owned by the schools, commercial or light industrial facilities. So we did not, we did not assume that there would be a large growth impact along that would have this corridor fall into an unacceptable level of service. Following that is the pavement condition, so from this, we did a weighted PCI. I would like to note, the pavement conditions we received are from twenty fifteen, a twenty-fifteen survey conducted by the city. So seven, eight years has passed, so the pavement is likely in worse condition than the values showed here. What we see is three tiers, three sections that are hovering around the fifty-five PCI mark, sixty-two, and then sixty-nine. So two A, three A, and three B would be the front runners based on pavement condition alone. And these are weighted PCI, so each segment between each street, we weighted that based on the length to compare to the overall length of the section. Finally, cost analysis. Again, there is a two-million-dollar roadway budget allocated for pavement from the twenty-eighteen bond program, so we kept that in mind during our selection. While the cheapest option was three A, we decided to go two A mainly because that would be still within budget and provide the longest length that could be reconstructed in the corridor. So the most value to the city, still within budget. These costs for utility and pavement, the signal, the signal columns, those will be for, include a twenty percent contingency on these. So this all also leaves a bit of runway there in case construction costs spike, as we've seen in the past couple of years. Additionally, this is the lowest utility cost along the corridor that we are analyzing here. So that was a further reason to choose two A. If, as design continues and the cost gets more narrowed down, since we are going back in with that six-lane section, to add more portion to the corridor, we could construct even further south of this section, maybe even to Pel Place. So with that, that is our overall recommendation, reasons why. Any questions or recommendations or clarifications?
Thank you. On that last page, that was one over a penny of the probable construction cost. That's just the construction cost, what about the engineering cost?
Engineering costs would be fifteen percent, we did not include those there just because we weren't sure if that portion gets applied to the roadway budget or not.
So it has a potential being, for instance, a two A, fifteen percent over the two point five?
Yeah, we actually have, the council approved the engineering contract in the amount of about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
It's already covered?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And it might be more of a Jackie question or something like that, but once, once this thing started, because it's going to be engineered, what's the timeframe? And then are we going to try to avoid, like, once, like, is it going to be done, like, when school's out?
Yes, sir, so the design will take approximately one year to complete, and then construction about a year and a half. We're actually going to have to bring the contract back to council because if you all proceed with Camp Wisdom to West Street, Kathy Self-Morgan?
Yeah.
Then we will have to change the scope of the current design contract. So next agenda, we will be bringing a supplemental agreement back to council. But, so, a year to design and then another year and a half to construct. And we will be working very closely with the school district, you know, along, during this entire project because we understand, you know, this is one of the most highly traveled sections of the roadway. And we'll be working very closely with them to try and avoid any unexpected pitfalls as we design and construct this project. Did I answer your question?
Okay, thank you, just one other note. And this might be for another discussion, but I just wanted to bring it out. I assume that we have some way that we will be advertising to all the businesses and the residents, for that matter, these facts that we've just discussed about how long this construction project might affect their business or their travel plans going north or south?
Yes, sir, we'll work closely with Mr. Handy in making sure that we disseminate information related to the construction project and the design project, you know, so that the, you know, everybody will be aware of exactly, you know, what's going on.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Item two C, Mr. Jeremy Tennant, briefing of the lab property update to city council.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just to provide you guys with an update, you guys requested a monthly update, and so how things are going with the lab properties, so this is why we're here, just to even provide this update to you all. First, I want to start off with a little background of where, why we are, why we are here. A couple of weeks ago, about four weeks ago, you guys allowed us, or blessed us, to go forth with this calendar that we have one before you. Right now, we're in, oh, I'm a partner, excuse me, we're in point of January and February right now, where we're actually going about meeting with the commissioners and boards. Last night, we had an opportunity to be with the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board, which initiated the thing, they have given a great presentation to them, just kind of give them the feed, the seeds of what it is to think about. We're going to go back next month when they meet as well, and with that, during our meeting, we get more information from them. So the initial approach is just to kind of explain to them what the problem, what the process is, how we went through the process, just like we did with you all last month. And then for them to provide feedback to us of how each of their, those individual stakeholders would like to see us proceeding forward in their regard, and provide comments, comments to us as a board, so that way it's not just one individual, but the entire board, bring this information to you all. It's packaged up with all the problem, all the individual citizens at the end, once we get to that point, which is we defined to you all previously, so that way you can bring, you can focus on everything and all material before you. Just a little background history, just to make sure everybody's up to the front, if you will. This was, provide, Mr. Bob Lag rented his property to the city on April the second with restrictions. There were two restrictions that were provided to you all, meaning to the property, excuse me, in council and the city. It was to ensure that the property was professionally mastered, planned prior to development, and also ensured the property be primarily used for the purposes of promotion of advancement, cultural, artistic, educational objectives within this particular property. This property has been currently withheld as open space, that's how the city has been holding it. The I, the comp plan from twenty seventeen, which was five years ago, the previous comp plan update, basically is specified for this to be an opportunity area. As of right now, there have been, excuse me, at that time, there was an RFP for in two thousand nineteen, when the city did a request for proposals. At that time, twenty seven, in twenty eleven, oh, twenty-one, the city council instructed the city manager and staff to identify the highest and best use of said property, this being the lab property. And on the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, this body asks for a staff to basically denominate the property as a need area. Henceforth, we're going through this process, just to make sure that we give the background as we move forward, as we're going forward. One of the things we, yes, sir?
As, as a result of what went out in twenty nineteen, it's on the previous slide, the, is, I mean, sorry, it's the RFP went out, what was the result of the RFP?
We didn't receive any responses, no one was interested. We've had some subsequent calls, but we did not receive any proposals for development of that site.
Just to give you guys a picture of the property itself, the property itself is about forty-two point four one nineteen acres. This is portion right here, as you see, there is a ten-mile creek that goes in throughout it. This is the other portion of lab property, which is not affiliated with this particular site up here, which is roughly seven point six seventy-six acres, just to kind of bring you all the speed of where the property is. And also for those that have better bearing, this is Dale Del Road, this is Santa Fe, and this is Cedar Hill Road, just to kind of get the bearings of everything. And we're taking away the aerial, just to kind of give you a picture, a pictorial of it, that's why we provided this in here for you as well. Also to denote the eight point forty, eight point four roughly acres of flood, flood area that's inside here as well. As mentioned earlier, the master plan, the latest PD of the property is illustrated and depicted before you all as currently stands. It shows like three phases, phase one B, one A, phase two, and phase three currently. Just to kind of give everybody these synopses of what the property looks like currently under BD, the plan development, which is currently sits on the site. All right, we mentioned earlier the opportunity area, which was identified in twenty seventeen, as we see right here. So I apologize for my circle being a little bit off, but it's showing the property that we kind of showed the bigger illustration on previously. It's a little bit off to the far right, but it should be directly on here. Basically, this opportunity area is denoted on the current, as the current opportunity area within the comprehensive plan. All right, kind of bring you forth to where we are currently. As we currently stand, we basically have a meeting on the twenty-third, in which we're looking to meet with the city planning commission and to provide them the same update we did with the Keep Duncanville Beautiful, which is basically in and to provide them the same update we did with the Keep Duckville Beautiful, which is basically an introduction to explain to them what the process is and what the request is, so we can have that formalized conversation for the next meeting, so they can start bringing us forth ideas, so we can crystallize those ideas for the third meeting, so that way we can actually start populating those, put those, those comments together, so that way we can bring them forth to everybody. And again, we're doing the same, the same general gist for the Economic Development Corporation, the Keep Duckville Beautiful Board, as we mentioned last night, and also the Neighbor Vitality Commission. And on the twenty-third, that meeting is planned to be a joint meeting with this body itself and also the city planning commission, just to put that out there as well. And of course, we mentioned earlier, conduct town halls. We're planning on conducting three town halls with individual, with the public. We're looking at the senior center, a church within a general area, and also a Zoom meeting, so that way we can get as much feedback as we can, so that way we can get the information out there and receive the information as well. And I just mentioned that on the sports slide right here. One of the things that we want to do is also, we are reaching out to University of Texas at Dallas. They're, they're capstone, capstones are specialized projects that students participate in to bring forth their expertise. We're looking at leveraging them as well to kind of help, because Nathan Lynette and I, we're, we're good, but we're not that good. So, we need to utilize some outside eyes to kind of assist us as well. And they've got some of those students in different disciplines that can help to make sure that this is something that's worthwhile for everybody to kind of know and at least we will pick and say to be like this, and we don't like that as well. And basically, they're going to help us determine the staff locations, and also determine the greatest and best use for this said property. To provide before you. At that time, we'll provide you with any other updates as we come forth. The upcoming updates that we see coming before you, is the times and dates for those public meetings. You've already had to see the meetings that we have for the boards and commissions. We'll just update you on those as they come along. Last night was a pretty brief meeting, just to kind of fill you in on the Keep Duckville Beautiful Board. That was a good, a good introduction, where we're able to inform them on what's actually occurring. They took it, they asked a few questions, we answered their questions for clarity, and they're taking those questions back to kind of bring us, but there were actually two that were saying, we already know how we want to do this property, so that's great, because that energy is there, so that way we can provide them the opportunity to provide the comments to you all, so that way you guys are making an informed decision as you move forward. Any questions, concerns, or comments moving forward? Yes, sir?
So, can you go back to the dates that you had?
These are
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, so the twenty-third, so that's a joint meeting between PNC and Economic Development?
Yes, sir.
And council?
No, no, just between, I'm sorry, I spoke too soon. I was mentioning to say, this body right here, the city council and the planning and zoning commission.
You had EDC up there. CDC and planning and zoning.
I'm sorry, I misspoke in that regard, excuse me. So, yes, let me clarify that, for Economic Development Corporation and this body.
Could, we could, I guess, reminders or notifications of when these, these meetings are going to take place, when it's going to be on the agenda?
Sure.
These boards and commissions?
Yes, we could do that for you, yes, sir.
You could put it on the council cabinet.
Well, just, you know, like the, the meeting yesterday, and there was one other, then I didn't know that it was going to be on there.
Got you.
And it popped up, so.
Yes, sir. Okay, we simply do that.
We'll add it to it. Also, the university students, we did, each year, as they've done with us in the past, they do a capstone, which is their master's paper. And so, they've selected two projects. One project is going to be the lab property. And so, generally, you have about fifteen to twenty students who make this their master's project. And so, they will probably want to talk to each of you and get feedback. I will tell you, the other is they will present it before the school faculty, and it would be nice to have them to present it to you all. But if you have any feedback or you want to share with the students, that would be valuable. But it gives us a chance to have additional help with this project and also a chance for them to experience land planning.
Anybody else?
Could you go back to the timeline?
The first one or the last one? The first one.
The first one, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, could you kind of explain what, as you were talking about a text amendment?
Yes.
Could you kind of explain what that, what that is?
The just over the timeline thereof.
What is the text?
What exactly is?
Sure. So, basically, the text amendment allows for us to identify what exactly this is going to be. Currently, as it stands right now, we don't have anything that will denote what, if we want it to be open space, if it's not open space, if we want to be nature preserve or anything of that nature, we don't have anything currently there. So, we need to basically determine what that text is going to be. In this case, right here, what is, what will nature preserve be? So, that's one of the things that we're getting, putting out there for the community. What would you like to see as your nature preserves, so they can help to craft that language, so that way it can identify that this is what we see in the nature preserve as. So, that's part of the exercise of this commentary period as well, where you're providing staff, as opposed to being a top-down approach, as a bottom-up approach, where they're providing us the information, we're collecting it, gathering it, and then disseminating amongst you all. So, you can kind of help to look at that, as we give it the best practice touchover, or this is what we think will be, this is what we recommend, that's what we do as staff. But you guys, an entity that basically after council makes its, excuse me, planning and zoning makes its recommendation, that basically say the golden, this is exactly what it is.
Why don't you let the attorney explain what a text amendment is?
Okay, better not, yes.
The text amendment is really provide a vehicle for us to consider what kind of uses we want to define a nature preserve, whether it's just totally passive or, or developed elements. And we need to put that vehicle in your zoning ordinance. So, we define it, and then we'll take that definition that you determined for the text change amendment, and then look at placing it on this property. So, it'll be defined, and then once it's defined, then you can use that tool to put on the lab property or any other property that you deem have some worth. It provides a zoning vehicle, zoning use that we do not have currently defined.
Did, do we have, did the committee that we appointed, did they make any recommendations for, for zoning use? Which committees, or the committee that we appointed, the lab, the committee that we appointed way back?
I can't speak to that, I'm only doing it for myself.
Didn't we appoint a committee?
We had to look at it. You're formally going through this process now, so that, that was part of what we did a month ago, is here's the schedule, here's what you wanted to see happen, so we're going to go through and officially identify those things and make those recommendations. So, if there is information, that's what this fact gathering process is that you have in the steps before you just take whatever information, whether it's from some previous committee or citizen input from the committee. Obviously, the report that you all, that were involved in the, in the lab property group, put together is obviously things that that element of our community wants to see in there, and that'll be turned over to Planning and Zoning Commission and to the capstone students to begin to work on. And you may change your mind over the course of this process, or add things or subtract things from.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Tannett, all of your hard work, and there's a lot more to be done, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor Protown, I've got another meeting that I have to take by Zoom. If it's okay, this presentation under the, under the executive session can be handled without me being present. If there are questions, I'll be happy to, if you'll recess, go ahead and take care of the rest of your business, and I'll rejoin you, and then we can recess back if there's questions, otherwise, if there's no questions. Because I don't want, one, you don't want me to be here, and two, you don't want to be here anymore. Thank you. So, you can go ahead and do your executive portion. I've already seen the chief's presentation.
All right, so at this time, that concludes the briefings and presentations. Thank you all for that. And next, we'll go into executive session, item number three. The city council shall convene and close the executive session to consult with the city attorney and the chief of police pursuant to section five five one decimal zero seven one, and section five five one decimal zero eight nine of the Texas government code, to deliberate security assessments, appointments, and implementation of security device concerning the Duckville Fieldhouse, and to discuss and deliberate legal liability issues regarding such facility. Yes, the time now is
At the DIAS. So, the first person I have is Ms. Patricia Ebert. Come on up ma'am. You'll have to pull that mic down to you ma'am. There you go. Appreciate you.
Patricia Ebert, one-one-five South Greenstone, Duncanville, Texas. So, the city of Duncanville is a strong city council, city manager, city. The city council determines the city policies and the city vision. The city council directs the city manager to direct the city staff to execute the city policies and the city vision.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jim Jones?
Mayor Proton, Council, Jim Jones, sixteen-twenty-seven Nob Hill Circle. I just wanted to touch base with you guys and thank you for calling the tour to the LAD property and attending and having your staff come out. I know some folks came a long way to do that and it's much appreciated. I hope you gained a lot from it. Regarding the LAD property, budget is coming up. I hope that you are able to include the LAD property from the inception of the budget planning as you go. The other thing is, is that apparently the comprehensive plan is also being updated currently as a result of some of the conversation on the LAD property. So, in the sixteen update of the comprehensive plan, there were input boards and consultants and all of that were involved in it. Just to remind you the perspective that citizens have and give you perspective on the property. The city staff asked what do you like most about living in Duncanville? Parks were seventy-five percent, which is twenty-five percent above the next highest response on that question. On the question of what is my vision for Duncanville, they want more green space. It's the very first line item. Imagine Duncanville as you want it to be in ten to fifteen years. What is it that you like? It's a recurring theme. It's green and public spaces. How important or unimportant are the following in terms of Duncanville's quality of life? Out of the top twenty, parks and green space made the top five at ninety-three point four percent. What would you like to consider as Duncanville's greatest asset? Number two is parks. And then to remind you that on the southwest quadrant of the city, on the city planning map, the southwest quadrant of the city does not have a park. Okay? We were gonna, we will talk about the preserve as being maybe the replacement for that park. Anyway, I thought I'd just make a comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next person I have is Ms. Evelyn Burks.
Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Burks and I am a seventy-two-year resident of Dallas County and a fifteen-year resident of Duncanville City. I had a list of concerns that I wanted to address with you all tonight, but everything has been so positive that I think I'm gonna leave it on that note and ask that you all have someone to contact me after tonight because this is a grave matter that concerns me. But I don't, I want to thank the pastor there for that prayer for protection. I thought it was very appropriate, but I don't want to mar the occasion. So, would you all please have someone to contact me? My address is four-one-one Oak Leaf Drive here in Duncanville.
Have it right here on your card, yes ma'am.
Yeah, I live in the condos up there and I live alone, so I really would appreciate if you all would have someone to contact me and leave everything on a positive note tonight. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you. And our last one is Mr. Van Cannon. Come on up to the- Come on up to the mic sir.
Hey, I'll get up here. Give me time. I've been in Duncanville sixty-one years. Don't rush me. I gotta get my cane in the right place here. You need to get a hanger up here on that. The fireman, I always remember, I ran for council one year and the, the fireman I had talked to and some other people I had talked to said, well, the fire chief is so sick, he can't get out and pull a hose or help us. I say, well, that's time for that man to retire. And they all agreed with me, I believe. Well, they, he eventually retired. Some fire chiefs retired for other reasons and some I kept track of for years, but they, since December, they've came to my house to take me to the hospital and where I was taken in on the, on the stretcher and put in a wheelchair and waiting in the waiting room for, from ten in the morning to four in the evening, everybody coughing, sneezing. And they checked my leg. It wasn't broken, but I got home, I gave the same stuff I picked up there to my wife. Now my wife's in assisted living. But that's not what I came up for this evening. Mayor, or pro mayor, I thought Patrick was pro mayor, but anyway, he was a good man. And council, councilwoman, women, I want a quote from a respected leader and it ties in with one I'd used before, not this exact one. A quote from a respected leader, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And I think that was Martin Luther King that said that. He said some other great things. I used one one time about when I was running for the office over here against a man from the Mormon church and I told him Martin Luther saying he would, his kids would be going hand in hands with Catholics and Baptists and so on. I said, I don't think they mentioned Mormons, but anyway, that's another story. Anyway, also, hey, I'm not gonna be woke on this stuff, so folks, I'm not going that wrong. Excuse me. Also, he said, "In the end, we will remember not for the, the words of our enemies, but for the songs of our friends." And I was here tonight to talk about people shooting up in the air, shooting up in the air with firearms. And they're coming down, they're coming on your roof. And in some areas of town, there's been over eighteen million hits on things shot up in the air on the internet. Bullets, there's hitting, it's fired up in the air, propelled, bullets propelling to earth and being shot straight up into the sky. And we're in, in my area town, it started on New Year's Eve at ten o'clock and it's still going at four-thirty, shots being fired. And some of them, I'm a lifetime NRA member and I can detect a AK-47 from my military experience and other things. Anyway, they, they can reach a maximum height of three-hundred-and-twenty-two meters. Ten meters is thirty-two yards, so you can see how high they can go up. And we're on a pathway in my area town of the flights from DFW.
Mr. Van Cannon, your two minutes are up. Do you have much more?
I'll put it in writing and they can check me on the Duncanville Happening blog.
Yes sir, we appreciate you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Ms. City Secretary, would you please read those for us?
Thank you. Consent agenda, item A, consider approval of the draft city council meeting minutes for the special city council meeting of December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two and the regular city council meeting of December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. B, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of professional engineering services agreement two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-eight for Phase Two Engineering Design and Construction Administration Services for the Cherry Street and Center Street Alley from Forest Lane to Alexander Avenue, Alley Reconstruction Project with IEA incorporated in the proposed amount of ninety-four thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. C, consider an ordinance providing for the appointment and contracts for a presiding municipal court judge and associate municipal court judges for the municipal court of Duncanville and authorizing the mayor to sign said contracts.
Thank you ma'am. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, that's, I heard two of you, so, Mr. McBurnett, and can I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, Mr. Contreras. Okay. Mr. McBurnett made the motion to approve and Mr. Contreras seconded it. Can we please vote? Unanimous five to zero. Thank you. And so, item five-A, which is take any action as a result of executive session, we did not have any. So, at this time, we'd like to have our staff report by our managing director of financial services, Ms. Adina Almore.
Good evening, Mayor Proton, council members and city manager. I'm here tonight to report to you the quarterly investment report, basically for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. First, I will give you an overview of kind of where we stood comparing fiscal year twenty-one with fiscal year twenty-two. You can see our portfolio in twenty-one was over sixty-eight million and ending in nine-thirty-twenty-two at seventy-nine million. You can also see that the, the yield on our portfolio has increased from that year-end due to the rising rates that we see in the market today. And you can also see that the rolling treasury yield is higher, so accounting for the higher yield. Although the investments, the actual interest is, is lower, the amount of interest that we yielded on those is higher. Now, we take a look at the quarter, the difference between the period from June thirtieth through September thirtieth. You can see that our yield, this is, this is really with the market, what's happening in the market as the feds increase the interest rates. You can see that we went from a yield of point seven-five percent to a yield of one-point-seven-seven. And therefore, that did increase our interest for that particular quarter. We did have a lot of CDs that matured into the market and as opposed to going back into the market to invest in CDs that were a much lower rate, it just was not worth it. So, basically, we invested most of those funds that matured back into local government pools that were earning little bit, just a little bit or just about what was happening out in the markets and different things. Our portfolio is made up of, as of the end of September thirtieth, forty percent is in money markets and local government investment pools where, which are very similar to money markets, but they're just focused on- markets, but they're just focused on investing local government cities and counties, uh, funds. And then sixteen percent of that was in certificates of deposit and the rest was in our Wells Fargo operating account. And just looking at the different, uh, benchmarks of yields that you can see, the differences, our portfolio yield, because of those maturities in, in, from the CDs, uh, we did have, um, a lower investment rate in June, but then in September, our rates were, our yield was lower than actually the treasuries and some of the, uh, tax pool instruments. And so this just gives you, uh, the to, total portfolio investment, just a graphical viewpoint of how that looks for us at this point in time. This is basically. So, our strategy really is to continue to ladder the portfolio with this fiscal year, the ending of the fiscal year, there are a lot of investments in CDs that were at high rates, so that accounted for some of our investment yields. However, when we went to invest back out, the yields were so low that did not make it worth it. So, we are continuing to, to shift between, uh, CDs, certificates of deposits or local in, but government investment pools and invest in treasuries and other municipal bonds. I can tell you that crossing the fiscal year, coming in from October through December, we have seen, as the feds have raised the rates, we have seen a significant increase in the certificates of deposits in banks. So, we recently just invested approximately seven million dollars in certificates of deposit in various banks that we have, um, not here, that we have previous invested in CDs at a much higher rate, averaging between four-point-six to four-point-eight percent. So, we should see a higher yield on this investment portfolio this year. We also did restructure our account at the Wells Fargo, our operating account, so that what we have in the operating account can be invested where it's not in use, when we're not using it to pay bills. And that will, you will see in the next quarter report, will amount to a significant increase in investment, uh, interest investment. Oh, so, oh, sorry. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Nobody? Okay, Ms. Outmore, thank you and your staff for all you do.
Thank you.
Keep us moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Since, uh, there's no more items on our agenda, call this meeting adjourned at seven-forty-five. Yes.